Counselor, do we need to do the pledge again?
No.
No, we're good. And we've done our roll call. Everyone's happy in the back room there. I see some smiles and all right. Well, thank you all very, very much for your patience. Good, I'm seeing thumbs up in the back room. Before we move on to our business tonight, I want to recognize we have our, we don't get a visit too often, and I'm so happy he's here, our new Senator, Senator George Latimer. I'd like him to please come on up and test that microphone for us and maybe you have a few words for us tonight.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the Board. I appreciate the interruption from your long agenda. I wanted to visit and I know it was impromptu at the last minute, I appreciate the help from staff, because at the end of the calendar year, we're getting ready to go back to our legislative session, so I wanted to highlight a couple of things very quickly and then we can talk offline in a work session, whatever way is necessary. First of all, this is an ideal time, if there are any issues for which the village has determined that you need state home rule authority for us to be in dialogue along with Assemblywoman Amy Paulin, to determine if we should be drafting and submitting legislation for home rule authority. There's a wide variety of things might relate to parkland, a parkland dedication issue, it could relate to a state road, it might be anything and then under the sun. But whatever counsel advises you, if there are issues that are pending right now that require home rule legislation, we'd be happy to work with you. And as we're roughly about a month from the beginning of our legislative session, which will start up in the legislature on the 13th of January, I wanted to serve as a reminder that this would be a time for us to work on it, we'll be happy to work with you in whatever way is possible. I know I speak for Assemblywoman Paulin as well. The second fact to share is that when we go back and we expect Governor Cuomo to submit a state budget on or about January 22nd, in it will be a variety of things that affect your budget and affect the way every community in the state operates directly, the direct aid to municipalities, which is relatively small amount of dollars for Tocco. But nonetheless, as you're already in the middle of your budget year, but you're starting to do planning for your next budget year, I wanted to highlight that so that come January 22nd or shortly thereafter, if you're doing some work session, we'd be happy to come back, sit with you, sit with your financial people and go over that so you can plan accordingly. Thirdly, I wanted to highlight, I know the village has done a very good job of using what's within your resources to advise residents, but we're approaching a December 31st deadline for re-registration for basic star benefits. And those individuals who own a home, live in it and benefit from star, who are not seniors with a modest income, those folks are on enhanced star, they have an existing annual verification process. All the rest of us who get basic star have to go online and re-register, and any efforts that you can make through your remaining resources to try to get as many Tocco homeowners to be aware of the deadline, after December 31st deadline, we assume, you know, the ship leaves the dock and that could be a real problem for someone who hasn't re-registered. And we'll work with any of those individuals if they happen to be that way, but we'd like to try to get as close to full compliance as we can. Anything that's appropriate for you to do using your resources, your email, your online publications would certainly be helpful in that regard. And then just the final point, I just wanted to thank you for a terrific weekend of Winterfest activities. I had a chance to go to a lot of different communities and I must tell you, you really did a fantastic job, well, obviously with the generosity of Pope and others, but it makes Tocco a real hometown. I don't live in this community, but I do feel very much at home when I'm here and I appreciate the fact of the role that you play for that. So with all of that, 100 miles an hour, if there are any questions, I'll take them or I'll hold them and we can chat another time, whatever's best convenient for your schedule.
Well, it's very kind of you to come tonight and I want to thank you for your patience and we sincerely appreciate your kind words about our great municipality here, too. Thank you.
Thanks. I look forward to seeing you again at some other point in time. Thanks for the interruption for the evening.
No problem.
Have a good night and I will bring the real checkbook then, actually.
Okay, you got it. We'll take you up on that. The next item of business tonight is going to be the appointment of David Scalzo as member to the Zoning Board of Appeals, filling out the term of resigning member David Kabaska. The term of this will expire on April 1, 2018. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
I just, oh, I'm sorry, I just want to thank Mr. Kabaska and Mr. Scalzo also.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor?
Trustee Quigley.
In favor?
Trustee Luizzi.
In favor?
Trustee Hayes.
In favor?
Mayor Eklund. In favor? Next, I have the appointment of Tom Ringwald as Chairperson of the Assessment Review Board. The term of this will expire on September 30th, 2018. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
I want to thank Tom also.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor?
Trustee Quigley.
In favor?
Trustee Luizzi.
In favor?
Trustee Hayes.
In favor?
Mayor Eklund.
In favor? Resolution number one is appointing and authorizing the hiring of Anthony Durensis to the position of Labor of the Village of Tocco Department of Public Works, effective tomorrow, December 10th, 2013, with a probationary period of six months. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
We had interviews, we conducted some interviews this week, we had multiple applicants, and I want to thank the Hiring Committee down at the Department of Public Works for their recommendations and their assistance in this whole process.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor?
Trustee Quigley.
In favor?
Trustee Luizzi.
In favor?
Trustee Hayes.
In favor?
Mayor Eklund.
In favor? Resolution number two is appointing and authorizing the hiring of Colin Hamilton to the position of Labor for the Village of Tocco Department of Public Works, also effective tomorrow, December 10th, 2013, with a probationary period of six months. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor?
Trustee Quigley.
In favor?
Trustee Luizzi.
In favor?
Trustee Hayes.
In favor?
Mayor Eklund.
In favor? Resolution number three is appointing and authorizing the hiring of John M. Galuzzi, Jr., to the position of Recreation Supervisor, effective tomorrow, December 10th, 2013, subject to a background check and all civil service requirements. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Just a footnote on this, our Recreation Man, Mr. Diarco, is retiring at the end of this month. He's put in more than 35 years of service to the village, we certainly want to thank him for that. And Mr. Galuzzi is going to be taking over the responsibilities of the Community Center as well as a whole host of other community enrichment-based tasks all throughout the village, so we welcome his employment here.
If I could just add, the hiring of Mr. Galuzzi sort of culminates a long period of discussion among the Mayor and the Board, particularly thanks to Trustee Hayes for developing a very comprehensive and wide-ranging job description, which is going to be a big order for Mr. Galuzzi to fill. But what we're really looking to do is to, we've got a bit of a hidden treasure there and we want to get better use out of it, more extensive involvement with the community and let people know that there's some very interesting things going on here. So this is going to be sort of the mandate going forward. I think we'll see some good things coming out of both the Community Center and our Recreational Department in general.
Thank you, looking forward to it.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor?
Trustee Quigley.
In favor?
Trustee Luizzi.
In favor?
Trustee Hayes.
Stan?
Mayor Eklund.
In favor? Resolution number four is appointing and authorizing the hiring of Ashley C. Techeeto, did I get that right?
Yes.
Thank you. To the position of Police Officer, effective January 6th, 2014, with a probationary period of 78 weeks. Do I have a motion for this?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor?
Trustee Quigley.
In favor?
Trustee Luizzi.
In favor?
Trustee Hayes.
In favor?
Mayor Eklund.
In favor? And I'm now going to swear in our new police officer. All right, we're getting a little feedback here, so, okay. Who's going to hold the Bible for you? You can repeat after me. I?
I.
You can say your name.
Ashley Techeeto.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge?
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of Police Officer of the Village of Tocco.
The duties of Police Officer in the Village of Tocco.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And welcome aboard. All right, I'm going to jump right to our next resolution, which is Resolution Number Five, Appointing and Authorizing the Hiring of Daniel J. Coughlin?
Coughlin.
Coughlin, to the position of Police Officer, effective January 6th, 2014, with a probationary period of 78 weeks. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor?
Trustee Quigley.
In favor?
Trustee Luizzi.
In favor?
Trustee Hayes.
In favor?
Mayor Eklund.
Very much in favor. We're going to do the same thing. Thank you.
I?
I, Daniel Coughlin.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge?
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of Police Officer for the Village of Tocco.
The duties of Police Officer in the Village of Tocco.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Dan.
That Bible has sworn in an awful lot of police officers here in the village. We had some great applicants to choose from, as we always seem to have, which makes the choice very difficult. Both Ashley and Dan are Tocco residents, they both have a degree in criminal justice, and we believe that they'll both be a great addition to our department. They're replacing two members from the department who are retiring in the coming year, so we're thrilled to have you aboard. Any of the other board members like to comment?
Thank you, Mayor Eklund. I'd like just to echo your sentiments and just to say that it was an impressive slate that we saw, but I think in the end, we all saw a separation from the other applicants in that there was a certain feeling among all of us that the two candidates who have been sworn in seem to have a destination or were destined for this position, and I think it became easy for us to make that decision based on that. That became clear in the interviews and we're very proud to be able to make these appointments today and we wish you all the best in your new careers as you move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Quigley?
I would just re-echo and say it was an easy decision on our part. I think we came to consensus faster with these two candidates than almost anybody else in over the last several years we've been doing these interviews, so this, that's a very great tribute to you folks and welcome and good luck.
Thank you.
Trustee Luizzi?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say I was just so impressed with your sense of purpose, and I'm referring to both of you, when you chose to pursue criminal justice coming right out of the gate out of high school and entering college. My feeling is your youth is such a tremendous asset as you both display such maturity and it's only going to serve you well as you further your career in law enforcement, so best of luck to both of yous.
Thank you. Trustee Hayes?
Thank you, Mayor. I do, of course, also wish you both the best of luck and I like to say, study hard in the academy. I don't think it's easy. No, it's not. I'm getting a nod in the back from our officers, but wish you the best of luck and we all look forward to seeing you get back here in the spring. Thank you.
Ashley, would you like to say a word or two?
Sure.
I'd like to thank Chief Castanzo, Mayor Eklund, the rest of the Board, Lieutenant Bellis, Lieutenant Stabile, and Detective Weinstein, and everyone else that's been involved in this process. I'm honored to be given this opportunity to serve here in this community that I not only love, but I've had the privilege of growing up in, and I couldn't be more proud or more excited than to be able to serve in this community and be a part of the Tocco Police Department. I thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Dan, how about you?
As Ashley said, I'd like to thank the whole Board and everyone that had a part in this process, and I really look forward to doing the best I can being a police officer in this community, and I'd just like to thank everybody that had a part in it and I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Chief, do you want to say a word or two? Chief of Police, John Castanzo.
Thank you, Mayor. I think that Bible's been in that, this building so long, it's the same one the good Sisters of Assumption school hit me over the head with a few times. I just want to say that we look forward to the, first of all, thanks to the Mayor and the Board for expanding, not expanding, but choosing these officers and filling the need of staffing at the Police Department. These two individuals bring a high level of enthusiasm and energy, and as was said earlier, I think they bring a great passion to the law enforcement field. So we look forward to them starting, you know, starting at the academy, their field training with the field training officers of the Tocco Police Department, working with every member, learning and being a part of our team, so thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Would anybody else like to comment on these fine selections that we've made here tonight? If not, we're just going to take a two-minute recess, just I know you want to join your families tonight, so we'll just take a pause for a minute now. Thank you. Okay, we're back in business here. I hope we're back in business here. Is it? Okay. Oh, all right, okay, good. All right, back to our agenda. The next item that we are going to talk about tonight is something that I think is wonderful, which is, we have a business in Tocco which anyone who's lived in Tocco is aware of it, Epstein's. Epstein's Clothing Store is down on Columbus Avenue, and if you've lived in Tocco, you've been to Epstein's. I know as a child, I can remember Milton Epstein, boy, I have such fond memories of going into that store as a kid. This year, Epstein's is celebrating its 80th year in business, which is quite a milestone. Max and Rebecca Epstein started the business, they opened a store selling whatever they could buy. They used to sell glassware, linens, whatever wares they could sell. And then they settled on line of clothing, which they've had for many, many years now. Morris and Milton, they went into the business after serving in the Army during the war, and I can tell you that as a kid, I can remember, and I know anyone who remembers Milton Epstein remembers, it was a piece of Bazooka gum as a kid, boy, I don't know, I guess I'd never had gum outside of going into Epstein's, and he would always, I always remember him chomping on that cigar that he had and handing us a piece of Bazooka gel. The chief is smiling because he remembers it, too. So, you know, just great memories to have of a nice old business like that. I'm so happy that Mark has kept the business going, it's thriving in our great little village here. So I'm pleased tonight to be able to give a, offer a proclamation, and I'm going to read it. Whereas Epstein's Dry Goods is proudly celebrating its 80th anniversary in business this year, Epstein's Dry Goods began as a store selling essentials needed from glassware to linens to clothing, and Epstein's Dry Goods first opened, the Epstein family, they knew the times were difficult and they offered credit to help residents, which they collected a nickel, a dime, once a month, they would collect these monies, they had a big ledger, and I actually remember that, too. I'm not that old, but I definitely remember these. So they kept that tradition going for quite a long time. Epstein's Dry Goods' original location was at 39 Columbus Avenue, and then they found a new location at 21 Columbus Avenue, the old post office building. Operating in the basement of the post office for about six years, in 1982, they purchased the building where they remain today. And whereas Epstein's Dry Goods started by Max and Rebecca Epstein, has had three generations run this family business and is proud to call Tocco its home. So now therefore be it resolved that I, Stephen A. Eklund, Mayor of the Village of Tocco, on behalf of the Board of Trustees and the residents of Tocco, take pleasure in expressing congratulations on this very special day and thank the Epstein family for their community involvement and successful business for 80 years in our village, and wish Epstein's Dry Goods continued success. And we want to thank you very much, and I have this proclamation for, Mark, I don't know if you want to say a word or two?
Thank you. Tocco's been very good to the Epstein family, and my father was the valedictorian of class of 1939 at Tocco High School. He loved Tocco, he was very proud to serve and to consider this his home, and I grew up in a family business where, you know, those kind of values are very meaningful, and it has been a very good career for me, and I'd just like to thank the Village of Tocco, the Mayor, all the trustees and all the residents of Tocco for making this a very good life. And thank you very much.
And we hope 80 more years, too. Thank you. Here, please, Mark?
Congratulations. Oh, of course.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
It's very nice.
That was nice. It's nice to be able to do that. The next item on our agenda tonight is to actually meet the new Director of ECAP, his name is Don Brown, and I have not met Mr. Brown, so this is my first opportunity, and I'm going to welcome him to come to the mic.
Good evening, Mayor, trustees, how are you?
Very well, welcome.
Good, thank you. First of all, first and foremost, I want to say thank you very much for allowing me to come here and introduce myself to the community. My name is Don Brown, I am the new Director of the East Coast Community Action Program. Just a quick history of myself, I work for Wescock, which is the parent organization of East Coast ECAP, and I've been the Director of the Yonkers site for the last 16 years. Now I'm at ECAP, I love it, you know, it's worlds apart from Yonkers, but for those who don't know, East Coast ECAP, we do a number of things, including Thanksgiving Drive, and I knew, I know you, Mayor, you were there with the Boy Scout Troop 353 recently.
That's correct, yes.
And I want to thank you and the Boy Scouts because at that event, we were able to pack over 200 Thanksgiving baskets, and with those baskets, we were able to give it to the seniors in the community and others as well. The Boy Scouts, for the first time this year, we actually went out and delivered the baskets to the seniors, you know, because they complained turkeys are too heavy and all the canned goods. On top of the Thanksgiving baskets we do, we also have a monthly food pantry where we give our fresh fruits and vegetables to the community every second Wednesday of the month. So I invite anyone who's a resident of Tocco, East Coast or Bronxville to come in and please take advantage of the free, the free fruits and vegetables. As well as the third Wednesday of the month, we give our pantry food, which is dry goods and canned goods as well. We also have an after-school program called Books and Beyond, which is funded by the community fund, and that program's for youth and the grades of sixth and eighth, and we're preparing them for the transition from middle school to high school. So lastly, I want to invite everyone to come down to ECAP, please come take a look and see what we do. It's a wonderful building, it's been there for years, and I hope that I can live it to the standards of ECAP.
I'm sure you will, we're thrilled that you're on board, too.
All right.
We welcome you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. All right. The next item on our agenda is a presentation from the Tocco Housing Authority. They're going to talk about a sidewalk issue down the Tocco Housing Authority.
Good evening, Mayor Eklund and the Board of Trustees, my name is Mark Kaminski, I'm the Attorney for the Tocco Housing Authority, and I have here is Irina Matbivski, who is the Executive Director. This was scheduled based on a notice sent by me in response to a notice from the village to repair sidewalks under Village Code Section 1915. There was a specific spot, a notice was sent by the village. The reason the Board asked me to appear and to send this is, after looking into this and they did a survey of other sidewalks around their properties, and while we're clear that the code, there is a code section that does place the responsibility for sidewalk maintenance and repair on the adjoining homeowner or property owner, and we're aware of that. It's just what struck them and what they wanted me to present is that in this particular case, and then in other cases that they've noticed around, that damage seems to be clearly caused by trees that they regard as something that's not their responsibility, they don't plant them, they can't cut them down, they can't tell you not to do them, but clearly trees grow, roots grow, and they cause displacement of sidewalks, and that results in damage to them. Regular damage from weather, cracked sidewalks, they understand that's the law, they have to repair them. The reason, and it struck them that there are a lot of spots where this comes up, that perhaps to bring before the Board, maybe to consider some sort of, in these circumstances, more cooperative or joint effort in making repairs. As I said, this, we know what the law says, however, it struck them and they did a survey right afterwards, they inspected it, and they looked at others, and there are a lot of areas of sidewalk where there's tree damage. I don't know specifically what the answer, perhaps when the trees are planted, there can be cutouts, maybe smaller trees, I really don't know, but what struck them is obviously is something that's out of their control, something that causes damage, but which under law, they then are responsible for repairing. That's really the reason why they asked me to appear in response to that, in response to the notice.
So I guess you feel you're kind of in a catch 22.
Well, it's not quite the case of if the village came to do repairs and they damaged the sidewalk and then turned around and said, well, it's damaged, you have to repair it. It's not in that category, however, it's not just ordinary, you know, repair items, wind, weather, traffic, et cetera, that it seems to be somewhere in the middle, but something that results for something, as I said, that they deem out of their control. There's also damage maybe from installation or removal of poles and other repair work that's done, that while they haven't gotten any notice on, they notified the village just to let you know that there's a potential hazard there. I assume this was in response to a notice claimed the village may have gotten and automatically you would send it out to the homeowner, I understand that. But in reviewing it, that's what they wished me to express, that we're caught in a situation where we have to repair it, but under those circumstances, to see if the village might consider something of a more, as I said, joint or cooperative effort, in those circumstances where it's something that maybe is clearly caused by something that's outside of the Housing Authority's control.
What capacity does the Housing Authority have? Do they have a masonry team or?
I think they would have to, they'd have to hire I think they would have to, they'd have to hire someone. Yeah, they would have to go out to an outside contractor to do that. They have laborers and repair people, but I don't think there's anybody on their staff who would be a...
We need a special machinery to do that.
Yeah, they would have to get, they'd have to contract out to have someone do that. And I understand, in some circumstances, that's what you have to do. But again, with an eye towards tight budgets, as I'm sure this board knows about, and the housing authority has to deal with, and we're not trying to palm it off, however, we do feel that if there is some claim that it's some sort of joint responsibility, to see if the village might consider that.
You have an inventory, you said, of these locations?
Yes, there was a site, I believe it was sent along with the letter, if not, I can provide it, where they went around and spotted various sites, and to their eye or their inspection showed what the cause was, especially ones that they believed were either by trees or by work that was done by the village, that I can provide.
Okay.
I believe it was sent with the original notice, but I can resend it to the council.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. All right. We'll revisit this. We'll actually speak to our Commissioner of Public Works, and we'll take this up in the next upcoming few weeks.
That's what I would ask. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Mr. Kavaleras, you have a question, and it might be Mr. Cavallaro as well.
Yes.
We, you know, we reviewed our ordinance, and it's pretty clear, as you admitted, that the responsibility is to the owner. Is this typical, and you work with other municipalities or other circumstances where the village would have some responsibility, some liability for this, or is what we have here in Tuckahoe pretty much what most municipalities have in terms of this kind of damage?
I think a lot of municipalities have an ordinance that basically places sidewalk maintenance on the adjoining homeowner. I do know in some municipalities that they're, they do in sidewalk replacement and in repairing when trees are put in, that sometimes the village will either share costs with someone or will do the work if it's a large tree that's caused severe damage, if they replace it. Often, they'll take down larger ones and put in smaller ones, and then they'll do a little cutout or something. So...
But that's more of a cooperation type situation?
Oh, yes, yeah. Under these, I mean, the law, I believe, is fault-free. In other words, it just says we have to maintain it. It doesn't, it doesn't provide only if it's our fault or through our negligence. And I understand that, and that's why the nature of my presentation is more, I think, going forward to see if this is something that the village might be able to look into. That's our request, and that's why they asked me to appear today.
Then is the THA, as I understand, is sort of a public authority? Are you in a different position than, say, I would be as a private homeowner with the same situation?
I think we are responsible under law as any homeowner would be, or as any property owner would be.
Okay. It doesn't matter that you are not your status.
No, I don't think there's anything that would exempt us from that. No, we're a property owner, and we're subject to the law, same as a single-family house or an apartment building or anything like that. No, we're not claiming a special status, and this is just a more general outlook. But in reviewing it, and because of the number of properties they have and the length of sidewalks, it's something that they wish to bring to the board's attention.
I think it'd be helpful if, in addition to the inventory you gave, is some least rough estimate of what you think it might cost to do these kind of repairs?
That we can do in short order and can provide to give you an idea of what it is, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time and attention.
My question, and I'm very sympathetic to the issue, because I know I've had this discussion with homeowners over, you know, my time on the board. And I guess this is a question for the attorney, you know, Mr. Cavallaro, is how do we assume any type of responsibility, maintenance, or upkeep of this issue with the Tuckahoe Housing Authority, with our change in the ordinance?
I think that's an important issue, and my concern is, although a cooperative approach is one approach the village could take, there's an issue of precedent, and because we're not distinguishing the Tuckahoe Housing Authority from any other property owner, I think that if we were going to go down the road of a cooperative approach, I think it has to be a village-wide policy then.
Right.
So, that's a concern that the board has to weigh and consider when it reviews this matter.
So, my understanding would be then if we do it for one, we would have to do it for all then?
I think it's going to be hard-pressed not to do it for all.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, yeah. Okay, yeah, I understand that. And obviously, we're not asking for special treatment. We, as I said, we're not exempt from this, but it's nonetheless something that we wish to bring to the board's attention. I would appreciate a response of some sort, so that we know how to proceed going forward.
Very good.
Do you want to say good answer?
Thank you.
Good evening.
Next item on our agenda tonight is, we have a presentation from George Papa Demetrio, and I know I pronounced that perfectly, from the Eastchester Auxiliary Police Department.
Good evening. George Papa Demetrio, Chief of the Auxiliary Police here in Eastchester. I'd like to thank Mayor Eklund and the Village Board for having me tonight to say a few words. And being that I'm on the agenda tonight, obviously, I want to comment on that too. I was here at last month's monthly meeting, and I was proud to say a few good words about Larry Rota when he got promoted to sergeant. What I failed to say was I also wanted to recognize Andrew Zerolnick, who became a sergeant not too long ago either. And the reason why I wanted to mention his name was because he too was one of my auxiliary's back in the day. So, to see these two individuals, you know, get their promotions is very pleasing to see that. And being that I'm on a roll of mentioning individuals who were auxiliary police members before coming onto the Tuckahoe Police Department, I also want to mention Chris Santiago, who was an officer here, who was also an auxiliary police officer, as was Vinnie Pinto. And just recently, Michelle Ortiz, who just got hired from the, got hired from the Eastchester Police Department, was one of our auxiliary's. So, we have a good track record here. And although it's not auxiliary police-related, it's Lake Island-related, I did get a call for Daniel Coghlan as a reference check, because he did work for Lake Island for a couple of years. So, I was very pleased to put a few good words in there too. And, I mean, being that I'm on a roll, I just also want to say that your choice tonight for John Galuzzi as the position that he received, too, another great individual in this community. I mean, you guys are on a roll in choosing really good, dedicated individuals to their respective positions that they have received. On the agenda tonight, obviously, you have on there a donation of a vehicle, a used vehicle from the police department, and I'd like to thank you very much for that. It's probably going to be the fourth car that's been donated from Tuckahoe. And whatever we receive from the local merchants or municipalities is very helpful, because we just basically give back to the community, being out there. And whatever we're doing, we're obviously doing a community-related assistance. For those who don't know who we are, we're partly just the police department. We're volunteers trained to be peace officers. We do go through extensive background checks, and then we're required to pass an instructional academy with curriculum very similar to the police officers. So, we do go to the county and go through an extensive training process. And what do we do? We have twenty-two active members. We assist the Eastchester and Tuckahoe Police Departments during times of emergency, whether it's blackouts or storms like Hurricane Sandy last year. And we were out there for about ten days straight, really helping out with traffic and whatever else was needed. We also help out during, during all the carnivals and the parades and during the holiday, if we need to be out there for holiday patrols, whether it's Fourth of July, Halloween, or during the Christmas holiday season, we do patrol in the areas of the shopping centers. Specifically for Tuckahoe, we help out with the Tuckahoe 5K Race in September. We help out with the Tuckahoe High School Homecoming in October, including their bonfire. Any of the parades that lead into Tuckahoe, obviously, we're down here to help out with that. And anything else we get called upon. I do want to applaud the efforts of Lieutenant Peggy Bellis and Sergeant Andrew Zerolnick and Officer Chris Santiago with their Explorer Program. It's kind of similar to what we had years ago, which was our police cadet program. And so, I'm always in contact with one of those officers and ask if there's anyone who graduates from that program, that we'd like to take them on our program, and then it'll be the next stepping stone for them to perhaps go into a career, whatever they would like to do. But for those who want to learn more about our program, I ask they could visit our website at www.eastchester.org and click on Emergency Services and get more information about us. Our program offers a sense of community service and obviously offers a training platform for careers in law enforcement. And as I mentioned before, I mean, to have so many individuals part of this department, even the Eastchester Police Department. So, again, thank you very much for having me on the agenda. Look forward to our continued relationship and our pleasure to serving both Eastchester and Tuckahoe. Thank you.
Well, thank you for coming, George. I have a question for you.
Sure.
Because I'll get this question asked to me once in a while. Is there any age requirement? Can you tell us, like, if I wanted to be an auxiliary police officer, if somebody in this room said, "Hey, I think I'd like to be..." What's the process? I mean, is there a minimum age, maximum age?
If you actually go on the website, it'll give you all that information. But we basically hire anyone eighteen and over. We'll do an extensive background check, including fingerprint, fingerprint testing with the state. We'll send you to the doctor who actually does the psychological background, as does the police department. So, there are a lot of similarities. We do go through an extensive background. We don't do as much as what the police department does, but obviously, you're dealing with confidential information and the safety and the security of all the residents. So, obviously, we need to keep them at a high standard. So, we do go through that background check. And then, again, as I said, you go through this training with the academy. And really, the instructors that are instructing the police officers at the academy are also instructing our members too. So, they go through that same process. Not as long, not six months long, but it's a few months long, and it's a lot of dedication, for sure.
You're sort of like the farm league for the police department.
We are. We are.
Well, that's great.
So, it's our pleasure.
Now, we really appreciate all the help you do for us here in the village. You know, that's why we certainly don't, I know we've been giving you some pretty bad vehicles, and I appreciate the fact that you take them. I know you've had to put engines in some and so on, but, you know, I also realize that you take what you can get. Beggars can't be choosers, I guess. So, we're happy to be able to give you what we can, and we're certainly happy to be on the receiving end of all the work you do for us. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Like, it does help, but even with the last few vehicles that we received, I don't want to just mention names because I'm sure I'll miss a few, but we had local merchants who are mechanics and all that, and body shops that have helped us with the painting and the maintenance of our vehicles. So, we thank them for their help. So, even the condition that you're giving us of those vehicles, we're reaching out to the community to help us, and they've donated their time and effort. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks so much.
Thank you. That brings us to the first opportunity to address the board on anything that's on our agenda tonight. And with that, we're going to move on to our next round of resolutions. We'll start with resolution number six is to transfer ownership of a two thousand and three Ford Explorer police vehicle from the Village of Tuckahoe to the Town of Eastchester Auxiliary Police Department. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Hayes.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number seven is authorizing the mayor to execute a lease agreement for second-floor office space at Village Hall with John D. Cavallaro, P L L C. The form of the lease shall be approved by Claire and Gerson F. Powers, attorneys for the village. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Hayes.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number eight is approving payment of vouchers in the amount of four hundred fifty-four thousand, two hundred fourteen dollars, insisting of abstract number twenty-two for twenty-three thousand, one hundred thirty-one dollars, abstract twenty-four for three hundred thirteen thousand, four ninety-nine, abstract number twenty-five for twenty-two hundred fifty-nine dollars, and abstract number twenty-six for a hundred and fifteen thousand, three hundred and twenty-three dollars. The three largest invoices paid were a hundred and twenty-three thousand, six hundred and twenty-one dollars for medical insurance premiums for the month of December, one hundred two thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars for the settlement of a tax surcharge reclaim that was up there on one oh eight Sagamore, forty-four thousand, three hundred and fifty-one dollars for electrical charges for the month of July, August, and October two thousand and thirteen. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Hayes.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number nine is authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with John Diorko concerning terms and conditions of employment. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Hayes.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number ten is authorizing the mayor to accept the proposal and enter into an agreement with Arthur Lang, Inc., for renovations to the judge's chambers. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Hayes.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number eleven is authorizing the village clerk to advertise for public bids for the, ready for this, guys? Media Room Upgrade Project. Do you think we need this? Which is located right at the end of this room here in Village Hall. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second? I should probably ask for a third and a fourth.
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Hayes.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
You know my answer on that one. Absolutely, in favor. We're going to add one more resolution. We're going to bag some meters for the holidays. Chief, you okay with this? Okay, good. Resolution number twelve is authorizing free, short-term, street parking in the business districts to encourage shopping in the village during the holidays. The short-term street meters will be bagged from Monday, December twenty-third through Wednesday, December twenty-fifth. Parking will be limited to two hours. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Hayes.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. This brings us to our departmental reports to the board, and we'll start with Police Chief, John Cisneros.
Thank you again, Mayor. Just, I'd like to go over the winter parking regulations for the village. The signs that are throughout the village have already started to be installed, and it starts with the alternate side of the street. Parking rules are suspended throughout the winter. Those are in place for street cleaning, and as the leaf pickup season has come to an it starts with the alternate side of the street. Parking rules are suspended throughout the winter. Those are in place for street cleaning, and as the leaf pickup season has come to an end, or is at least winding down, the alternate side of the street parking rules will not be in effect over the winter months. They go back into effect in late March, early April, depending on the weather, and we put the signs up and then issue at least one week of warnings. So we ask the residents to, you know, pay attention as the spring months come upon us. There are emergencies, I'm sorry, there are snow zone signs up and around the village, which means that you're not allowed to park on those particular streets where it's posted from when the time snow starts to fall until twelve hours after it stops falling. Unfortunately, last night was the first night that we had to enforce the snow zone. There were streets, the Department of Public Works was out with their sanders and, you know, salting the roads, and even though it's not an accumulating snowfall, it's enough that, you know, all of the apparatus is attached to the trucks. It's difficult for them to make their turns, to navigate through the narrow streets. So sometimes people become upset to say that, you know, it wasn't a significant snowfall, and we shouldn't be enforcing that, that particular ordinance. But unfortunately, the DPW needs to get out there, needs to navigate the streets. So it's, it's from the first sign of accumulation through twelve hours afterwards. So we ask our residents that if they see that snow or, you know, frozen precipitation is in the forecast, that they do not park in the snow zones. The other regulations are, in our business district, there's a, there's an overnight restriction of no parking between three AM and six AM. It's pretty much, all the business districts within the village, again, that's to facilitate overnight snow removal. And that goes into effect on December fifteenth, and that runs through March first. And then lastly, some of the streets still have the December fifteenth through March first restrictions, which are pretty self-explanatory. So if anyone has any questions about those regulations, they can feel free to call the police desk at nine six one, four eight hundred. I just wanted to say that we are about ten days into the dispatch of the County, West Coast County Department of Public Safety dispatching the midnights, and it's going very smoothly. We had some early issues with the radio system. They've all been addressed, and I'm happy to say that the transition went very, very well. On December twentieth is the Tuckahoe Police Organization's annual Christmas party. It, it starts at four forty-five PM at the Tuckahoe Community Center, and it's for children up to nine years of age. There'll be entertainment and a visit from Santa and toys for everyone. It's free of charge, fully sponsored by the Tuckahoe Police Organization. So all of our residents with young children are invited to come and enjoy the afternoon. I just, I know that George gave a great presentation about the Eastchester Police Auxiliary, and I just want to thank them for all of their assistance to us over the years. As he mentioned, all of our larger events, particularly the fireworks event, really could not go off without their assistance. They're there for us, for us whenever we need them. They're professional, and they conduct themselves very well, and we're, we're very pleased to have that resource available to us. So I thank them, and I thank them, as you said, Mayor, as being the farm system for our, some of our police officers. Congratulations to John Galuzzi. I just, you know, we worked with John on, on a lot of the Winter Fest and other, other outreach programs that are out there. It's been a pleasure working with him, and I truly look forward to working with him in his new capacity. And with that said, I just, I just want to mention, say a word about John Diorko on, on his way out. I know John a very long time. He was a, coached me on varsity football, somebody that I've always looked up to, a mentor and a role model. He's meant a lot to the young people of this village for many, many years. Always conducted himself as a gentleman, always looking to help out. A lot of things that he did and does are not tangible. You really can't put your hands around it, but I do know that he's been an asset to this village for many, many years. We wish him the very best in his retirement. And lastly, just Merry Christmas to everybody on the board, to all of our residents, and a very Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chief. Appreciate that. Frank? DPW, we're going to talk about snow tomorrow, I guess, huh?
No, there's not going to be any snow.
Okay. Eighty degrees and sunny.
Mayor, board members, I also want to welcome Johnny Galuzzi. I think will be a great asset to the village of Tuckahoe, and the two officers that were sworn in today. But also want to mention, I also wanted to welcome the two new hires down at DPW, Anthony Durensis and Colin Hamilton. You know, we were able to witness firsthand, because they worked their seasonal's down at the department for almost two years. So we were able to witness first hands their skills and their capabilities, but most importantly, their willingness to work with others. Coming to our Christmas tree, we, it went off well this year. The Winter Fest went out well. Most people ask me, why are we cutting down the healthy tree for our annual Winter Fest? But most of these trees are earmarked for removal anyway. They're overpowering in someone's home, or they just create a dangerous or hazardous condition. So they ask us if, you know, we're willing to take it for our annual Winter Fest. So that's why these trees, and that's how we basically take these trees. This year, we took our tree from Three Stewart Avenue, which was previously owned by the Carapellas, and they sold it to the McCarty's. And both, both families were willing to donate their tree for the annual Winter Fest. This year, we had a beautiful Colorado spruce, and I think it's got to be one of the nicest trees we've ever had. It's not quite as big, which is good for me, but it was definitely full and colorful. And none of this would be possible without the support of David Pope and the David Pope, Generoso Pope Foundation. I also like to thank everybody that takes part in this great day of cutting the tree, erecting it, and also transporting it to Depot Square. I'd like to begin with Paolo from Greenskeeper, who helps us every year, Dennis Lucenti and Lucenti Landscaping, Paul Petrillo and Petrillo Contracting, who helped us transport the tree from Stewart to Depot Square, the Tuckahoe Police Department that's always willing to assist, and of course, the DPW workers and all the hard work they've done to make this all possible. I also like to thank Phil Raffiani and the Raffiani family, who purchases the lights and the, the roping for all the decorative lights every year in the Crestwood and, and Depot section of Tuckahoe. All the reeds throughout the village are supplied to us by the beautification committee. And the Christmas tree at the base of Jackson Avenue was also lit up by Lucenti and Lucenti Landscaping. But I also do want to mention that throughout the year, Dennis Lucenti has donated numerous trees, and also planted numerous trees in the village of Tuckahoe gratuitously without asking for any funding.
He did all that work on Pleasant Avenue for us, too, didn't he?
Yes.
Yeah.
He's, he's probably planted about twelve trees there for us. They did a beautiful job, and he's always willing to help. He also maintains Jackson Avenue, which is beautiful. If anybody ever walks by there, we have a bioswale going through our native vegetation there, which is all supported and taken care of by Lucenti Landscaping.
Mm-hmm.
You know, but without all the, without all the joint effort of all those people, none of this could be possible. So I wanted to take the opportunity to thank everybody. And DPW would like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays.
Thank you, Frank. Thank you. Yeah, you think about all these things that you just rattled off, and if we didn't have the generosity of all these businesses and individuals, it'd be a pretty dark and gloomy place here. So, you know, we're, we're very, very fortunate to have generous, generosity from Mr. Raffiani. It's funny, I was just driving down through Crestwood, and I was mentioning that to my father-in-law the other day, and he said, "Oh, really?" I said, "Yeah, absolutely." We, we, there's a great spirit of volunteerism and generosity in our community, so. And you don't get that in every community, I can tell you that much. So it's, it makes Tuckahoe all the more special. Ms. Cavallaro, anything from your side?
No, Mayor, just the issue of the sidewalk. Perhaps we can discuss in more detail at the village board's next work session. And congratulations to all the appointees tonight, and Happy Holidays and a Happy New Year to you and the board.
Thank you very much. Camille, anything?
Nothing.
Nothing at all. Okay. Miss Laney is business. Our next village board meeting is going to be on Monday, January thirteenth, two thousand and fourteen, and village offices and DPW will be closed on Wednesday, December twenty-fifth in observance of Christmas, and Wednesday, January first, in observance of the New Year's holiday, of course. That's going to bring us to our Board of Trustees member reports, and we are going to start with your deputy mayor, none other than Thomas Giordano.
None other than. Thank you, Mayor Eklund. Couple of things. First of all, I'd like to echo the mayor and trustee Quigleys, as well as our department heads' acknowledgement of John Galuzzi and his new role. I'd like to extend our congratulations to him. We think he'll do a great job developing that role as it moves forward and, and sprouts into kind of a, a new direction that we're seeking to bring it. As well as acknowledging John Diarko for his many years of service to our community, and, and extend my personal well wishes to him and thanks. Just to get some housekeeping out of the way, our planning board meeting is on twelve seventeen at seven thirty PM. There are three items on Hundred Main Street, which is an architectural review, eighty-five Yonkers Avenue, which is site plan approval, one ninety-nine Marble Dale, which is also site plan approval. The zoning board of appeals will appear on December eleventh at seven thirty PM. The four items on the agenda are one hundred and ninety-nine Marble Dale, which is a special use permit, one thirty Bella Vista, which is an area variance, one forty Wallace, which is an area and parking variance, and ten Ridge Road, which is an area variance. Would like to just talk about a couple of events that went on in the, in the village recently. First was, this past Saturday, there was a chili competition at the Broken Bow Brewery this past Saturday. Chief Costanzo was there, as was Mayor Eklund. It was, it was a lot of fun. The event was a lot of fun. We had the, it was well attended. It was great to have the police departments, the fire departments, and the ambulance corps competing in a good-spirited way towards the charity of their choice to create the most delicious chili. And I can tell you, they were all delicious. Despite the results, and I congratulate the ambulance, Eastchester Volunteer Ambulance Corps for their victory, my feeling was that it was, the two police departments that had the best chili, and I would say that Tuckahoe's toasted cumin beat out Eastchester's pulled pork by a nose. But, but more than this, I really, I think it was great to have our community get together in an event that brings community together towards a good cause. Also, would like to, the, the Winter Fest this past weekend in Depot Square was also very beautiful. It was a beautiful-looking event with carolers and Santa, who told me that I had been, the board's been naughty this year for raising taxes. So I guess we'll be on the bad list this year. But it was a lot of fun and, and well, well-attended as well. So thanks to the Generoso Pope Foundation for their ongoing beneficence and for sponsoring this festive evening. And I'd like to recognize both the Generoso Pope and Broken Bow Brewery for creating events that benefit the public and inspire fellowship and community. Would like to thank Chief Costanzo and the police department and auxiliary police as well for supporting these events and to make them successful. And, and last, and certainly not least, to Frank DiMarco and the DPW for all of their hard work in making our village, once again, as they do every year, this village look festive, as pretty as a postcard, and ushering in the spirit of the season. And, and I think it was very nice that you acknowledged all those individuals, corporations, and, and organizations that had a role in what they did. It really shows how much people contribute to the community. And thank you for, yeah, for recognizing them with such specificity. And last but not least, I'd like to just extend all of my best wishes to our staff and to our residents for a joyful, safe, and blessed holiday season.
Thank you very much. Pretty as a postcard. I haven't heard that in a while. And you know what? That definitely fits us.
It really is.
You're absolutely right. Thank you. That was great. Trustee Quigley?
Thank you, Mayor. Chamber of Commerce is having their annual Christmas party a week from today, actually a week from this moment, at Mama Ascenta's. It's always a great event. You can check on the details on the village website in the Chamber of Commerce page. Library, there's always lots going on. Particularly, I want to mention, there's a raffle for the Friends of the Library. These folks have done such great work for the library, because as everybody knows, the departments in the village are getting squeezed every year, and we're having to do more with less. And this is where the Friends of the Library are stepping in. The funds they raise have gone to acquisitions of books and videos and e-readers, and also to a number of the very, very great and fun programs that the library sponsors, week in and week out. A couple I'll mention just coming up. This Friday on the thirteenth, the Kitty Cabaret, we have musical puppet sing-along for the zero-to-six-year-old crowd. Also, for that baby-to-six-year-old crowd, there'll be another library sing-along next Tuesday, the seventeenth, at two PM. Movies for the adults going on the Wednesdays. December eleventh will be Way, Way Back, a recent release. And on Wednesday, the eighteenth, snow in August, goes back a couple of years. Many more children's events, teen events, adult events, all available at the library. Their newsletter is regularly mailed out to anybody who wants to be on the list, and this is a good way to keep track of what's going on with the library. So again, check the library section of the village's website, or go directly to their own webpage, which is www.tuckaholibrary.org. And finally, I can't add anything more eloquent than what Trustee Giordano said about the season, our wishes, and it's just great to be part of a village that really is so committed to doing things right, and doing things in a community way, and making it really kind of a special place. So my wish is for Merry Christmas to everybody, Happy New Year, and all two good wishes to everybody.
Thank you. Trustee Luise?
Thank you, Mayor. Being the third cog in the wheel, I'm sort of like going to be repeating, but I have to, I first want to start off by congratulating John Galuzzi on his appointment as the new recreation supervisor. I am a firm believer that Tuckahoe has taken a giant step forward with his appointment. The residents of this community will soon realize the full potential of the Tuckahoe Community Center, as they will see the expansion of community-based programs and activities. Mr. Galuzzi's expertise in organizing and managing the many village events is well-known throughout Tuckahoe and the surrounding communities. With his appointment, we are now assured that these events will continue to flourish in Tuckahoe. Onto, again, I'm going to echo what was said earlier by Trustee Giordano. I'd like to compliment DPW on doing an excellent job in decorating the village and still maintaining the sanitation and highway maintenance schedule. And of course, the job that was done erecting the Christmas trees is outstanding. Chief, compliments to your staff as well with that transition. I know, you know, I'm sure we're all on pins and needles with that, you know? As it is, every month, we can't get on TV, you know, without. If I may, I'd just like to remind homeowners that curbside leaf pickup has, has ended the last day of November. I still see homeowners, as I drive throughout the village, still leaving those leaves at curbside. So they are liable for a fine if the police department or code enforcement officer is notified. So please, place your, your leaves in the proper receptacles for Thursday pickup. Moving on to the seniors, they will be having their annual Christmas luncheon at the Davenport Country Club this Thursday, December twelfth. And then, next Thursday, December nineteenth, Santa Claus will come to visit the seniors at Father Fata Hall. And senior director Jennifer Vettermeyer would like to thank the generosity of the Tuckahoe Eastchester Chamber of Commerce for their generous support in providing Santa Claus with his sleigh and his many gifts. And lastly, a pit of information I received from the Tuckahoe Historical Society, yesterday was the one hundredth and eleventh anniversary of the incorporation of Tuckahoe. And I would like to wish everyone in Tuckahoe and the staff a Merry Christmas, a Happy New Year, Happy Holidays, and a Happy and Healthy New Year.
Thank you. Thank you. One, 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 huh?
Yep.
That's wonderful. Trustee Hayes?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few announcements. First, our next tree committee meeting is scheduled for next Wednesday, which is December eighteenth here at Village Hall at seven thirty PM. And then, our environmental committee will reconvene after the holidays, the first Wednesday in January, January eighth, also at seven thirty PM. And I also just wanted to take a moment to thank the Generoso Pope Foundation for their generosity, again, for their sponsorship with our Winter Fest celebrations. And also, I wanted to thank very much the numerous volunteers from our Tuckahoe Beautification Committee. I think we had almost all hands on deck yesterday. It was really, really a wonderful turnout. And also, I just wanted to make a brief reminder for parents who had their children's picture taken yesterday with Santa at Winter Fest, that they'll be able to pick up their CDs starting tomorrow.
Mark is dropping it off tomorrow, sometime tomorrow.
Okay, so then, we should say Thursday, not to confuse anyone then. So this Thursday, December twelfth, at Village Hall, everyone can just come in here to the clerk's office and give their name, and Camille and her staff will be happy to distribute them. And of course, the clerk's office is open between the hours of eight thirty and four thirty daily. And I just, of course, wanted to wish everyone here in our village Merry Christmas, of course, and a Happy and Healthy and Prosperous New Year. Of course, our staff, our, our department heads, and my fellow board members as well. So wishing us a wonderful upcoming New Year together.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Well, I'll be brief, because everyone's already said it tonight, but yes, too. I want to certainly thank David Pope. He is very generous in sponsoring the Winter Fest celebration. You know, each year, when I take a look at what we do down there in Depot Square, what DPW assembles, you know, I say every year, it's like you're visiting a miniature version of Rockefeller Center. And I don't know any other place that you can go out and have that community feel and just a fun time. So it was a great weekend. Weather held out, the reindeer were there. I got to see the reindeer again. I like seeing those. They're there every year. And Santa Claus is always nice. I sat on Santa's lap this year, actually. I whispered in his ear for something special. Let's, let's see if those wishes come true. But it was a great weekend. We certainly want to thank the police department and DPW and the auxiliary for all the help in making it a safe event. That's first and foremost. That's first and foremost. I too want to thank John Di Arco, Coach Di Arco, he's normally called. You know, he's put in over 35 years of service of the village. That's an awful long time for somebody to stay with one employer, and as the chief pointed out, you know, you can't really measure what he has done just on what you see him doing on a daily basis. He's really touched the lives of a lot of youth in our community. He certainly has been a very successful football coach, and, you know, we wish him all the best. He'll be retiring the end of this month, but I get the feeling he's probably still going to be around up at the high school, working for the athletic department up there, and I think we won't see the last of him, we'll certainly see him around town. So, we certainly wish him all the best, and we definitely welcome John Galuzzi. We're going to have some great new things coming onboard all throughout the village of Tuckahoe. The Christmas tree, just jumping back to Winter Fest, the Carapella family and the McCarthy family, I've known the Carapellas for years. I got to meet the McCarthy family the day we were cutting the tree down. Just a wonderful family, so nice for them to go ahead and donate that tree to the village, and it certainly is a beautiful tree. So, I too am happy that it's not as tall as it's been in the past, keeps, allows us to get some sleep at night, not worrying about some of those windy evenings when the tree's going to fall down. So, with that, just want to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas and a Happy and Healthy New Year. So that's going to bring us to the second opportunity to address the board on anything. And since we have scared everyone home, I guess it's time to wrap it up. So, if there's no other business tonight, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do I have a second for that?
Second.
Till next time, Tuckahoe, have a good night, we'll see you next year, and have a great holiday.